The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order and let the roll reflect that all council members are in attendance with the exception of Councilmember Bolsonik and Councilmember Brock's. Quorum has been established. Tonight, we're going to start out with a few presentations and proclamations, and so I'm gonna head right over here, this lecture. Terry, if you can come up, please, Terry. Well, good evening, everybody. Our first proclamation type is in recognition of the Sons of Norway. Sitten de Mai, right? Holiday? Yeah. And that's coming up one day, exactly, Thursday. It's coming Thursday. We have a local chapter of...how do you pronounce that lodge?
Jumkols.
Jumkols Lodge. Boy, if I could speak Norwegian, I'd be set, right?
You'd be right in.
Well, we want to celebrate that organization within our community, and so tonight, we're gonna read a proclamation, and I'll have Councilmember Vaughn begin that proclamation.
Whereas, on May 17th, 2016, called Sitten de Mai in Norwegian, marks the 202nd anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of Norway and its independence from Denmark, and...
Whereas, Sitten de Mai is celebrated worldwide with parades and traditional foods, and...
Whereas, many residents of Hastings are of Scandinavian descent, and...
Whereas, local lodges and the Sons of Norway play a central part in organizing the festivities, and...
Go ahead, Mark.
Are we coming back around?
Whereas, the Himmkost Lodge has eighty-three members from Hastings, Cottage Grove, and surrounding areas, and...
Whereas, the Himmkost Lodge works to preserve Scandinavian traditions and culture, and we recognize the signing of Norway's constitution, and...
Be it resolved that I, Paul Hicks, Mayor of the City of Hastings, do hereby proclaim May 17th, 2016, as Norwegian Constitution Day in the City of Hastings, Minnesota. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Please say a few words, if you like. Talk about a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Jumkols Lodge does represent the communities of Hastings. It represents the communities of Cottage Grove and Rosemont as well. The Norwegian people and all the Scandinavian people play an important role in the history of Hastings, along with the Germans and the Irish and other people who came and they settled this country and made the community what it is. We try to celebrate the various Scandinavian cultures, and we try to make it meaningful to people and be proud of their heritage, and this heritage is part of Hastings' heritage as well. We thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you. The next item that we have is the proclamation declaring the week of May 21st through 27th as National Public Works Week, and I'll ask our Public Works Director to come on up. And I'm gonna trade proclamations with you, Terry.
I think you got one. I'll say that should all read the same. Nope. You got your second one. That's why. All the people you brought to the meeting.
So we have a proclamation before the City Council proclaiming National Public Works Week. Nick Egger is here, who is the Director of our Public Works Department, and so you're representing all the folks at your department, and we're going to have that proclamation read. We'll start this time with Councilmember Lund.
Whereas, public work services provided in our community to nearly twenty-three thousand residents and hundreds of businesses are an integral part of our everyday life, and...
Whereas, public works facilities and services are essential for sustainable and resilient communities, and for the public health, safety, comfort, and high quality of life and well-being of the people of our city, and...
Whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works professionals, and...
Whereas, the efficiencies of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff our Public Works Department is materially influenced by the public's attitude and understandings of the importance of the work they perform, and...
Whereas, the support and understanding of an informed citizenry and business community is vital to the efficient operation of infrastructure systems such as water supply, sanitary sewers, streets, bridges, and stormwater treatment and drainage, and...
Whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Hastings to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs.
Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Hastings does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week. Public Works connects us in the City of Hastings, and we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, adopted by the City Council this fifteenth day of May, 2017. And Nick, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. Breaker. I just want to thank the council for making the proclamation. To my knowledge, it's the first time that we've put forth one of this nature. The American Public Works Association has been sponsoring National Public Works Week for about sixty years, not quite sixty years, and just something that I'd like to try to do to step up the level of awareness and identity that public works plays in everyday life. You've got twenty-two folks out at the shop that do a lot of things behind the scenes, but for next week, we're gonna try to highlight those a little bit more with social media, and then, of course, with our Machinery Hill display at Rivertown Days this summer, we'll have some hands-on impact there that a lot of people have come to enjoy the last several years. So those are the beginnings. Perhaps in future years, we'll do a little bit more as we go, but looking forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Next, there's going to be a presentation from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association. It's their Award of Excellence that they're gonna be giving to the City of Hastings in regards to the Riverfront Renaissance, and welcome to our council meeting. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Can you introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tracy Peterson, and I am a member of the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association Awards Committee. It is an honor to be here tonight to present a Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association 2016 Award of Excellence to the City of Hastings and Bolton and Mank for the Riverfront Renaissance Improvements. Before I do that, I'd like to take you a few minutes to tell you about the MRPA. It was founded in 1937 to foster the growth and development of parks and recreation throughout the state. We presently have eight-hundred-and-fifty professional, corporate, board commission, student, and retiree members. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The MRPA was created in 1987 with the awards with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for the excellence in the fields of parks and recreation. The Awards Committee honors those projects for 2016. MRPA members may nominate a project for an Award of Excellence in seven different categories: administrative or management strategies, communications, park and facility, programming and events, sponsorships and partnerships, and volunteer initiatives. On behalf of the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association Awards Committee, is my pleasure tonight to present an Award of Excellence to the City of Hastings and Bolton and Mank for its winning Project Riverfront Renaissance Improvements. This project showcases a uniquely stunning park that now links downtown Hastings to the Mississippi River. The MRPA Awards Committee would also like to recognize the following individuals: Brian Hillgardner, Senior Project Manager from Bolton and Mank; Sam Kessel, Landscape Architect from Bolton and Mank; and from Hastings, Nick Egger, Public Works Director; and Chris Jenkins, Park and Recreation Director. In addition, the committee would also like to recognize many of the other staff from the City of Hastings, as well as the Riverfront Renaissance Master Plan Scoping Committee for who formulated the vision of this project into reality. Again, congratulations on this very distinct award.
We're gonna have a photo, if we can, council. If you can meet in front of the Diaz here, and please join us, and Brian, and whoever, and Bolton and Mank, and Chris. A whole team. Let's get the team up here.
Your work.
Yeah, I know, we're presenting it. We want the presentation.
I wanna see this.
We have front, Chris.
And I'm sure. So, I'm trying a lot of giant. Just look.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. with a presentation.
I'll just queue it up here, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Jess, you ready? Nice to see you. Oh, absolutely. Appreciate it.
So, Jess, you can just click through, is there anything you want us to hand out, or...
I'll mention this. The community can grab a copy. If you guys have them. Thanks for having me. How's the sound? Everybody hear me? Great. So, I lead Dakota County's Aging Initiative to create age-friendly communities, and this is a short presentation on city profiles that we did for all eleven major cities in Dakota County, so here's a copy of the report, and then an outline, if you want to look it up online, and you can look at other major cities. So, City Councilmember staff have this, but if community members would like a copy afterwards, you can grab one right here. So, about a fifteen-minute presentation. I know you've seen the materials, so I'll do a quick run-through of the overview. By no means am I gonna cover all the indicators, but then an opportunity for questions, and then if you have questions, at another time, please feel free to email me or call me. So, demographics, we all know that, I won't go into this very long, but we all know that demographics are changing, we're getting much, much older, and Dakota County is no different than other parts of the country or the world. So, in 2010, about forty percent of the population was sixty-five and older, and less than three years from now, we're gonna double that, and then by 2030, we're gonna more than triple So, Communities for a Lifetime, good places to grow up and grow older. It's basically a community planning framework philosophy that if you design and build with older adults in mind, you can do so to benefit other age groups of society of your community. And the classic example that always gets used is curb cuts. They're good for parents with strollers, kids on skateboards, all of us benefit from that infrastructure upgrade. And healthy, active, successful residents obviously yield economic and social benefits. They're active in the community, they're employed, or they're volunteering, they're contributing, and we contribute to that vitality by great sidewalks, great infrastructure, great sidewalks like I have downtown in Hastings here. So what makes a community for a lifetime, or an age-friendly community, there's probably six or seven more names for that, but basically a community for a lifetime, and the concept is providing good transportation options for people beyond just the personal automobile so that people can remain independent and mobile. Walkability, as I talked about with sidewalks, is important, and not just for exercise, but for getting around, for transporting yourself. A range of affordable housing options is critical to that mix, and Hastings, I think, has a pretty good mix of that, as I compare to other cities in Dakota County. Also, services and supports for older adults and caregivers. Caregivers do a bulk of the service for helping older adults maintain their lives and age in place, so it's usually a spouse or a daughter-in-law provides this support, so the more we can do to support caregivers, all the better. So, respite care, adult day services, just giving them time to themselves for a few hours so that they can relax and re-energize, and then go about caring for their loved ones. You're seeing more and more supports from employers for allowing people to do that type of caregiving, also volunteer opportunities, and you see an even stronger preference from the baby boomer cohort for intergenerational activities. You're seeing a lot of growth in pairing younger students, younger adults, and older adults. And then, as you can imagine, the technology is exploding, so sensors in rooms to indicate if somebody has fallen, or if they haven't gotten out of bed, sensors in beds and chairs, there's thousands, probably millions, of different health-related apps, so that area is obviously growing. The area of transportation with ride shares is growing as well, so some promise on the horizon. And then, obviously, access to affordable healthcare is really important, that should probably be at the top of the list, but another critical element that creates communities for a lifetime. My initiative, briefly, the approach or the objective is to increase awareness among the public and among our elected leaders about the demographic changes that are coming, and also work in communities on particular projects and planning activities, demonstrate best-practice models and pilot projects. One project that I'll just, pilot project that I'll highlight here, or one that started in West St. Paul and then has grown to Hastings, is the Loop Circulator Bus, which the city has been very supportive of. And we actually drew from an earlier circulator bus model from Hastings, learned from what that project entailed, and have built upon that. But you're seeing circulator buses around the county are developing, so West St. Paul, Hastings, and then next week, we launch a circulator bus in South St. Paul, which will have connections to West St. Paul. So hopefully, more and more cities will realize the benefits of a circulator bus, handicap-accessible bus that circulates through downtown areas, connecting older adults and others that live in particular housing areas to some more transportation options. Just briefly, one of the groups that I've worked with in Hastings is the Hastings Boomer Advisory Council, and there's some other groups there listed in other cities, but obviously looking to partner with existing groups or form new groups to work on age-friendly communities. So the city profiles, and here's copies here, if you want them later, but we finished them up in 2016, and thanks to city staff for helping me to answer some of my annoying questions at the end, but finally finished them at the end of 2016, and they're really a barometer for where cities stand in terms of age-friendliness, looking at transportation and housing metrics, land use, walkability, volunteer capacity, there's lots of indicators, and I won't go into all of them, but obviously blending with the comprehensive planning process which all cities are going through right now, and we hope that they'll be helpful in that process as you think through aging communities and how communities can make adjustments, as Hastings is already doing with the circulator bus and other initiatives we've supported, walkability downtown are fine examples. So next steps are continuing to share the profile with civic groups and give presentations, and then hoping to develop a simple checklist that as cities complete their comp plans, they could go back with our assistance and look at, you know, what they implemented, what language they put in there to help prepare their communities for the future. Very quickly, this is just a contents page, a quick splash page of what's in the report, and I'll just mention a few of the items that I won't go over today that you'll find in the report. But we look at subsidized rental units per one hundred people, we look at assisted living units per one hundred people, just to give a metric for how does your city compare in terms of its assisted living units to your neighboring community, because obviously people have some flexibility to move to a neighboring community if they want a different housing option, but most people want to stay within their home community. There's a strong preference for that. So those are just some of the things we look at. We also look at annual transportation costs based on Hastings' locations in comparison to other cities, you know, number of volunteer hours projected for sixty-five-plus people, and then also age sixty-five in the labor force. So those are just a couple that you'll find in the report that I won't touch upon in detail today. AARP has a livability index where you can type in your address or your zip code, and it'll give you various scores somewhat similar to the profile, and it's great that it's raised a lot of awareness around age-friendly communities and that importance, but it's county-level data that they've extrapolated for cities just based on population, so it's not as specific and particular as the data sources that we've used from the Met Council or the US Census that look specifically at Hastings' data. So, it's a great tool. The overall scores, as you can see, are very similar from one city to the next, and that's because it's county-level data. But we choose a few of our indicators, like proximity to parks, proximity to grocery stores, which we thought was an interesting indicator. So just a little background on how each of the profile pages or indicators is set up. We give a little bit of background on whatever the topic is, population, for example, we give the data, we interpret the data, and then we try and pose an open-ended question that councils or communities can think about. And then lastly, the indented portion there is a 2010 DHS survey of ten thousand baby boomers, so some really rich data on what baby boomers are thinking about doing related to housing or transportation, so it usually relates to the particular indicator. So, population, as you can see, in 2014, Hastings sixty-five-plus makes up about thirteen-point-five percent of the population in 2014, so obviously 2017, it's risen some, but a very large cohort of baby boomers, as you can expect, at twenty-three-point-seven percent, so about a quarter of the population, which is similar to other cities. Generally speaking, the cities to the north of Dakota County, West St. Paul, South St. Paul, Mendota Heights skew older, so Mendota Heights, for example, has thirty percent baby boomer population, partly because it's a smaller community. So one of the indicators we look at, housing performance scores, and this is a nine-year average, so Hastings falls toward the middle or the higher end of the middle at seventy-four, and this looks at a particular criteria for coming at that housing performance score. Increased housing variety of housing, housing cost, percent of mixed land use within housing, and then increased transportation choices to help people get around to these housing options, and then leverage of private investment. So Hastings is doing quite well in comparison to some of the peer cities in Dakota County. Another interesting indicator within housing that we look at is housing affordability. We all care about affordability of housing and know that it's certainly on the rise, and this data bears that out. So affordability is usually talked about in terms of those spending thirty percent or more of their household income on housing. If you're spending thirty percent or less, that's deemed to be affordable, that's good. So you can see here from this data, Hastings homeowners, twenty-one percent are paying thirty percent of more, so that's not affordable for them, and then that compares relatively favorably to Dakota County homeowners on average, but as you can see, Hastings renters, sixty-eight percent are paying more than thirty percent of their income for housing, very close to the county average as well. So, a great need for affordable housing, and that's not different for Hastings or any other Dakota County communities, but certainly more can be done by cities and the county itself, which has CBA housing. Very quickly, just to highlight the mix of variety of housing that Hastings has, you can see that there's been an increase of townhomes from nineteen ninety to twenty-fifteen, from three percent to twenty percent, which is good. Hastings still has a pretty good percentage of duplex, triplex, and quadplexes, which you don't find a lot of in the suburbs, so that's a good niche for housing variety. And then multifamily housing units have stayed relatively stable at sixteen, fifteen percent in 2015, and then Hastings still has, based on this data, some manufactured housing, which is good, a good stock of affordable housing as well. The DHS survey, the data point that we correlate here, twenty-eight percent of Minnesota boomers planning to move by the year 2020 reported they'd considered a townhome or condominium. So you're seeing more and more cities take that preference into account as people start to think about moving out of their single-family homes, they don't want to clean out the gutters, they don't want to shovel anymore, moving into a townhome or condo is a strong preference. Jumping to walkability here, walkability, obviously a major building block or component for safety for people as you get around to exercise or transport yourself, and Hastings falls above the county average or the eleven-city average at thirty-nine percent coverage of sidewalks on streets, county roads, city streets, just above the county average at thirty-six percent, a little bit behind your peer city in Farmington, but ahead of Inver Grove Private data source, WalkScore.com has been getting a lot of buzz, and we've used that here, and we also compare it to other neighboring cities. You can see downtown Hastings, when we looked at the score in 2016 of October, scored a sixty, it might be slightly higher now, I would hope it's a little bit higher, and then citywide score, twenty-nine, and then you can see the other scores for other cities. You know, ninety to a hundred is a walker's paradise, you know, seventy to eighty-nine is very walkable, and then it goes down to being very car-dependent. But pedestrian crashes are twice as likely to happen without sidewalks, so if you have sidewalks on one side of the street, obviously that keeps people a lot more safe so that they're not in the street, and obviously decreasing speeds down to twenty miles per hour saves lives as well. One area that I'm particularly concerned about is living alone. The percentage of older adults living alone as we live longer, and particularly women live longer than men, living alone, and typically, these people have less income, they're a little less mobile, difficulty accessing services because of that, and then staying engaged within their communities. So as you can see here, in two thousand, Hastings had about twenty-seven percent of sixty-five-plus living completely alone, and then that's jumped to thirty-two percent in 2014, which is a bit higher than the county average. But the campaign to end homelessness, which some people have heard about, they've been getting a little bit more play in the media, but they've been talking about loneliness and isolation being the equivalent of smoking fifteen cigarettes per day, so it has some damaging health impacts for people, isolation, not being connected with your community or not being connected with your loved ones. So, the question we pose here in the report is, could nonprofits, faith communities partner to provide home visits or check-ins by phone? Could more formal neighborhood networks be helpful to those living alone and create a stronger sense of neighborhood connectedness and support for everyone? And I know there are some of those programs throughout Dakota County that churches do to support older adults. Hastings Family Service certainly plays a big role in this community, and there's always more that we can do, particularly with that kind of shocking percentage of people living alone with higher needs. Lastly, we look at age-friendly policies within communities. Some communities have these policies, some don't, so those are accessory dwelling unit policies, so granny flats, so it might be an apartment above your garage or maybe in your basement. We look at complete streets policy, so the picture there, if you can kind of see it, shows an example of complete streets, but traffic calming measures, narrow, single roads, bike lanes, big wide sidewalks like you see downtown Hastings. Obviously, you're not gonna put these everywhere, but in core downtown areas, they can be very successful in terms of attracting commerce, shopping, walkable districts for restaurants like you have in downtown, so that's great. And then we also look at percentage of mixed land use, obviously that's an example of mixed land use, where you see a mixture of retail and housing and office space, and then lastly, whether the city has a bike-walk policy or plan, which can obviously contribute to communities becoming more age-friendly. I think that's pretty much it. Any questions? I'll stop there. I hope that was about fifteen minutes.
Appreciate that, and being part of the Boomer Advisory Council, some of this looks familiar, and we'll be having future discussions. Counselors, are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one question, is this data or is this report fed to developers, or do they come get the information from us, or what? You mentioned developers, and I'm just curious, are we gonna take an active approach as a city or as a county to get this out to all developers that here's what we think each community could use?
It's partly on me to get it out to the developers. I'm certainly not gonna stop any of you or anybody from the public in sharing this with developers, because I think that's useful data for them as well in considering this, and it's kind of a chicken before the egg. The developers want to hear from the public saying, "We want wider doorways, we want zero-step entrance." zero-step entrance, we want the laundry on the first floor, we don't want the bathroom on the second floor," things like that. So it's a little bit, has to come from the public, but then it also has to come from developers' awareness that this is going to be a growing market. And that's, I'm speaking of new construction, but retrofitting current homes is going to be a massive market, and hopefully, a lot of those developers will be getting into that, because they'll be doing those retrofits, bringing the laundry up to the first floor, converting a dining room to a bedroom. That's the kind of stuff that's going to take place.
Any further discussion? That's Member Folt.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just curious, had, within this analysis, was there like a top five things that the city could do to, you know, for, you know, what are the low-hanging fruit where you'd get our best bang for our buck kind of thing?
Thanks. This one-page sheet kind of looks at some key challenges and issues, gives action steps and recommendations, and then potential partners, because obviously, city governments can't do this alone, Dakota County can't do this alone, it includes developers. So I would refer you to that. You know, sidewalks, I think connecting multifamily housing units with sidewalks that are, would carry people to shopping options is a good low-hanging fruit, if you will, that cities can focus on. You know, Hastings has already done the sidewalk development downtown, which is great. Transportation, they've covered that. I think there's going to be, with transportation, obviously Uber and Lyft and ride shares exploding, I think we could do more, county could do more, private sector could do more to build capacity there. So I think when boomers start to retire and look for part-time jobs, driving for Uber and Lyft and helping people in their community get around, I think it's going to be great. On top of circulator buses that run in downtown in key areas, it's going to be all of the above within transportation, because it's such a big county and it's so spread out, and people are accustomed to driving their cars every day, just like I am. So it's going to be a mix, but hopefully, that one-pager will help. Actually, a version of that was produced for Hastings years ago when you did some strategic planning, and I've just modified it a little bit. So thank you for that early on.
Councilmember Liefel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, thank you for putting this together. When trying to look at inclusiveness in the city of Hastings, I think age-friendly is a piece that really requires some focus and might often tend to be overlooked, so appreciate this data. You mentioned earlier on that people prefer staying in their home communities. Does that play any impact at all on wait lists? And correct me, did I read something that says that the waitlist has been temporarily...
I heard that, too. The county's waitlist for CDA housing, they're stopping it, or, yes, because I'm assuming the list was growing longer and longer. And Dakota County has, I think, 1,500, 50-plus or 55-plus independent living, which is great, but the demand is still great beyond that.
Do you know if location, home location, plays any factor in your waitlist?
I know that 90% of people prefer to stay within their hometown. There is some movement within counties, but most people are going to stay within their home city for as long as possible and look for options within that home city. And then obviously, if they can't provide that housing option or other amenities that they're interested in, maybe it's, you know, bike lanes or bikeability, who knows what it'll be, then they may transfer to other communities.
Thanks, Jess.
And the idea is to raise the level of age-friendliness for all of Dakota County's cities. You know, some might be ahead in a particular area, sidewalks or whatever it might be, but if we can raise the level for everybody, then hopefully, all of us can stay within the community that we've chosen.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Jess. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot. I'll leave these up here.
We'll be in contact. And you can put that material there. We'll set it right on that table. If anybody wished to gather it later, please feel free. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from the Heritage Preservation Commission on the annual preservation awards. It's always kind of one of my favorite things every year that we do. And so I'll welcome Justin to the meeting. And counsel, if we can, let us get in front of the Diaz here and greet the award recipients once they get their award, and then afterwards, we'll have a photo. Okay? So go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm Justin Fortney, city planner for the city of Hastings and staff support for the local heritage preservation commission. This is the 17th Annual Preservation Awards that have been given out by the HPC. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Amy Martin, the chair of the HPC, to present the awards. And if, when you come up to get your plaque, if you want to just join the council members at the Diaz, we can take a photograph at the end.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mayor Hicks and the council for their support, and Justin for helping us out when you just got back to work this week. So I'll introduce my fellow HPC members. This is Ian Martin and Kathy Sovick-Siemens. Okay, so the first house, we'd like to invite, I'll tell you about the house and then invite the folks up. This is 801 West Second Street. This house was built in 1909. It's American four-square in style with the typical narrow clapboard siding, concrete foundation, and evenly spaced windows with one-over-one sash. It also has a distinctive dormer, which is really cool. The current owners have cared for and maintained this property, retaining and preserving the original features and repainting the house using a color from an historic house on the state fairgrounds. And we think it is truly a lovely house, and we would like to invite Robert and Marcia It's kind of hard to stand up with all the people, but yeah, you're good. Okay. Yeah, thanks to the council for being up there so people aren't standing all by themselves. Okay. Next, we have 714 Tyler Street, and the owners are Greg Pierce and Mary Ann Hart. Let's see, this is the before picture, and I will click to the current picture. Okay, this L-plan vernacular house was built in 1870 and was a popular house type in Hastings. An open front porch was a standard feature of this style, and you can see that the owners have kept this. As you can see by the before photo, the owners have done a lot of work on this home. They've removed nonhistoric features, re-sited with hardy plank siding, replaced the windows, retaining the same style and sash, and added appropriate-sized window trim. This house is outside the historic district and is not subject to HPC guidelines, but the owners have definitely done things the right way and with great care to preserve their 147-year-old home. Are Greg and Mary Ann here? Okay. 714 West Fourth Street. The owners are Cory and Hillary Yoder. This house was built in 1884 and remodeled quite a bit in 1939, 1940. The original owner, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, G.W. Hodling, was a minister and also the mayor of Hastings. This house is rectangular in shape with a gabled roof and an enclosed porch at the left front of the house. The gabled roof over the porch comes down quite low to the ground, giving the house a distinctive look. When the present owners bought the house, it was in foreclosure. They have worked very hard to bring it back to its original glory, and they have succeeded. All right. 616 West Third Street. Jim and Peg Katuria. This colonial-style, I'm sorry, colonial revival-style house was built in 1941. The two-story gabled-roofed house has a three-bay facade with central entry. The regularly-placed windows, I'm going to say evenly-spaced windows, have simple surrounds and contain six-over-six sash. A later one-story addition is also gabled-roofed and has a multi-paned bay window. This house is an excellent example of post-World War I middle-class residential construction and has been meticulously maintained by the owners. The limestone stonework on the lower level was added several years ago. Each piece of stone was hand-cut and carefully placed by owner Jim Katuria. All right. And each year, we nominate or recognize usually a commercial property or a public building. So this year, it is St. Luke's Episcopal Church at 615 Vermillion Street. St. Luke's was one of the first churches in Hastings, originally built in 1855 and made of wood. That church was destroyed by a fire on Christmas Eve, 1880, and the present church was rebuilt out of brick in 1881 in Gothic revival style. This church is truly a gem and has been well-maintained for well over 100 years. There have been additions to the church, but the original building retains much of its integrity. It's worth a visit to see the inside of the building, which includes beautiful, original All right, so thank you to everyone who has done just a beautiful job maintaining your home, restoring your homes, and adding to the beauty and history of Hastings.
Could you maybe squish in a little bit so we could try to get a group picture? All right. Okay. Counsel, let's go back to the beginning of the meeting and approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 1st, 2017. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Counsel items to be considered. Any further counsel items to be considered? Seeing none, counsel, what you wish, consent agenda. Councilmember Lund makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body. Is there a discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to the administration. Well, we're going to have a public hearing under awarding of contracts and, public hearing, first of all, contracts and public hearing segment. We have three contracts to award. The first one is the 2017 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements Program. Ryan, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Getting right into it, yes, first project award here is the 2017 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements. We did receive five bids in late April on this project, with a low bid coming from Danner out of South St. Paul. And their low bid was for $1,239,922.80. Our construction cost estimate was about $1.7 million, so we got a favorable bid there. We also did receive, from all bidders, a contractor questionnaire and background information on each contractor, with Danner being new in town. We interviewed several references and the contractor as well, and we score each contractor based on their submittals, using objective criteria. And Danner did meet the minimum score for that process as well. So with that low bid from Danner and with their score of the qualification review, we recommend Danner for award, and the resolution is attached in your packets. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that. That item is now before us. Councilmember Folt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ryan. Nice job estimating. That's terrific that you came in, your bid was that much lower than what your, what the construction cost estimate was. Two weeks ago, at our council meeting, we were talking about Emerald Ash Bore, and at that time, specifically, we were talking about the boulevards and what to do with the boulevard trees, and that the city adopted, or I guess we had a policy correction or clarification, I should say clarification, about what it meant for homeowners in respect to the, taking care of the ash trees that are within the boulevard. At that time, I had brought up that I would like to see, in the projects where we are having infrastructure improvements, where we're doing the street reconstruct and doing sideways reconstruct, that we would also look at the removal of the ash trees at that time, since everything's being torn up and it's probably the most cost-effective and efficient time to do that. You don't have to worry about, in the next five to eight years, having to remove a mature tree and all the root systems, disrupting the sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. Not to mention, it will be the responsibility of the homeowner at that point when the tree dies, to remove it. So since we are $400,000 under budget, I would like to suggest that we take into consideration a change order so to look specifically at the ash trees that are within these neighborhoods. I had asked Melanie about this, and she had said that her staff had looked at the matter of the ash trees and had identified which ones were within the boulevard, and it would cost about $20,000 to remove those trees and replant them at the time that we are doing this work. And so since the, since the writing is on the wall, and there's no going back at this point with Emerald Ash Bore, we're looking in the next five to eight years, we're going to have the zombie apocalypse of ash trees, as I like to refer to. And so we've got to do something. Many cities at this point have already taken steps to mitigate the impact of the ash trees and have been systematically removing the ash trees at times such as this, when it is most cost-efficient to do so. And so I would like to ask for a change order. I'd like to make a motion that we have staff include within the scope of this project where we look at the removal of the trees. And so if we would like to ask residents at this time, those that have the ash trees within their boulevard, if they'd like to have them to remove, that we sort of remove them at this time.
Okay. Counselmember, here's what I would suggest, that tonight, what's before the city council is to present the award, you know, on the bid.
Right, to the contract. Right, to the contract.
And it'd be unfair right now to make changes to that as we're selecting a contractor. However, I think you got the message, and what can happen is that staff can investigate and get the hard numbers, you know, that you requested, and then come back later with a change order request. That would be one possibility, but not tonight, since we are, just have before us, the awarding of the contract.
Well, we can award the contract, but we could also make a change order and make a recommendation for the change order to occur, so that those negotiations with the contractor can occur. It is my understanding that the staff have already looked at this specific issue, and Melanie has those cost figures.
Melanie, do you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, Your Honor and council, that is accurate. Councilmember Foltz asked for what the inventory of trees were for this year's infrastructure project. I'm gonna look to Nick, 'cause maybe he remembers, I wanna say it's in the neighborhood of $20,000. We did not include that, and that was in alignment with the council direction on policy and how we're gonna deal with boulevard trees, so, but we do have that information.
Okay, okay. From a staff perspective, is there a comment from that?
Well, I'll just say, that cost isn't the price from any of these contractors that have been on the work. It wasn't included in the scope that was put out for bids, so we do ask the question, it is after the fact and...
I guess you're getting what I'm trying to get at, let's approve the contract and then move from there. That's kinda good, was my point.
It doesn't take much effort to ask the question, whether it's gonna be $20,000 or not would remain to be seen, as we would talk with them, so I guess what I'm saying is, don't hold us to that number, we're not really sure until we ask.
And that's to my point, you know, I wanna get an exact number before I approve it, and so if we say that tonight that we're gonna approve the change order without knowing the exact price and hearing that back from the contractor, that's what the process, I like to see it. And then have the change order, this typically happens, the change orders come back to us during the project, and we approve or disapprove them at that time. So, I just don't wanna let the process work its way through. That's my direction, but councilmember, you can make any motion you like, but that'd be my suggestion.
Sure, I understand fully what it is that you're saying, and so I guess I would, I guess maybe to clarify, I would make a motion that we approve the low bid and the award to Danner, however, that we look at a scope change, which would then be requesting of the contractor to examine the costs of the elimination of the ash trees within the boulevard and move forward as such.
Okay, so the motion is to approve, is to award a contract to Danner Inc. have the amount of $1,239,922.80, and that they ask the question and look into the possibility of removing the ash trees, and can report that back. Is there a discussion to that motion? Okay, it's been moved, is there a second to that motion? I need a second. Okay, that motion does not pass without, that motion does not go forward with a lack of a second. I need a...
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mayor?
Sure, councilmember.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding, councilmember Foltz correctly, so what we're looking at is, yes, we are agreeing to the bid from Danner Inc. for the neighborhood infrastructure improvements, but the caveat is just that we do a cost analysis of what would be the cost to the city or the homeowner.
To the city specifically.
To the city.
For the city to remove the tree, as you're ripping up all that infrastructure.
So, we're not saying we're going to go ahead and do that, we're saying we'd like to find out from Danner what would be the cost.
Correct.
Correct.
What, councilmember's motion is to award the contract and have staff talk to the developer about the removal of the trees, get a hard number, and then offer back later what that change order would be in terms of their analysis with the contractor. That's her motion, but that motion has been withdrawn due to lack of a second. Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, if we were to look at this, obviously, that'd be something that we would discuss at length further. I'm going to assume that there's going to be a fair amount of people that don't want these trees removed too, so we need to take that into consideration. But if it's simply to establish that we do want to direct staff to do this, I can, I will second that, as long as there's no immediate action.
Councilmember Foltz, you renew your motion? Renew your motion?
I renew my motion.
Okay, councilmember Lund, you second that motion? Okay, now we have a motion before us. Councilmember Vaughn?
I think we're missing the point here, I can't support that, because I think we're asked today, we asked staff to go out to bid, I don't wanna delay the bid, 'cause I think it's too competitive in this. I'm not a big fan of change orders in the first place when we get into this, and I have a bigger discussion on the ash trees, because I personally was told at the last meeting that there is success in treating these trees, and we like that part of our community, and I'm not ready to support taking out trees, because I don't think there is a, whatever, I don't know what your word was, councilmember Foltz.
Zombie apocalypse of ash trees.
I'm disagreeing with that strongly, because I think treating works, I think it's proven, and I think it's fairly new, it's not like it's a 20-year-old thing, we knew Ash Bore was coming, but I think we're being aggressive, and I think, I liked our plan that we were heading in last time, and I don't think we should be putting that anywhere near this one. We need to approve what we went out to bid with, get that going, and I'm not ready to even support even staff time looking into that research until we, as a council, give some good direction on where we're going with that.
Okay, is there further discussion? Councilmember Foltz?
May I clarify, that we ask the residents whether or not they want the tree removed, because if they don't intend on treating the tree and just allowing it to die, it, what's gonna happen is that when, it'll start to, it'll start out slow, it's already, I think we have four or five confirmed cases now in Hastings, and it'll start to move exponentially. And in the next five to eight years, we're gonna start to hit critical mass, where the trees are gonna start dying faster than we can possibly remove them, and they do become a public safety hazard, as they will become brittle and begin to crumble, and so already Minneapolis and St. Paul is beginning to hit that point. And so, as I said before, the majority of other communities have already begun to systematically remove the ash trees when it is, when it's most cost-effective to do so, and in the time in which it's most cost-effective to do so, is when you're doing these kinda neighborhood infrastructure improvement projects. And so, I think that it's prudent to remove, begin to remove the trees while it is more of a, we have more of the luxury to be able to do so, and so that's my point, is just having more forethought and planning as to how it is that we're gonna begin to mitigate the effects of this, with an upside.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Council, we're gonna take a roll call on this one? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn?
No.
Councilmember Foltz?
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld?
No.
Councilmember Vaughn?
No.
Mayor Higginson?
Yes. There being three votes no and two votes yes, the motion does not prevail. Councilmember Vaughn?
I just make a motion that we're just gonna approve the contract for 2017 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements to Danner Incorporated for the $1.2,392.80. That's it.
Okay, motion has been moved, seconded by councilmember Leifeld, to award the contract to Danner Inc. Is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution for the city council on the 2017 Mill and Overlay Program, Valley Paving, is the award company there, contractor, $252,015. Ryan?
Yes, exactly, nothing much more to add there. We did receive six bids on this project too, also very competitive, low bid, being what the mayor stated, engineer's estimate at $294,000, so again, very competitive pricing with that amount of bidders, hungry for some work. One interesting thing on our project this year, we do have $180,000 coming out of the state aid account to do state aid overlays, and $72,000 of that low bid amount to do local roads, so the map's attached in your packet, but it is split up this year, and with that, staff recommends Valley Paving with their history of doing this type of work. We think they'll do a fine job with our project, and for their low bid of $252,015.72.
Okay, council, that item is before the body, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Lund makes the second, seconds that motion. Discussion to the motion, is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Oh, is there discussion? Well, councilmember Foltz?
No, I just had noted that, I'm sorry, thank you, Your Honor. I had just noticed as I was on, in these areas, some of the manhole covers are, there's a differential between the actual manhole cover and the roadway, and so it's just scattered throughout the community, and I noticed that in particularly at Fifteenth and Pine, there, the manhole, in the middle of that intersection's really large, and there's a large gap between the manhole cover and the surface of the roadway, and so I was just looking for reassurance that wherever there's manholes that are like that, there's gonna be a corrective action taken, so that it's flattened out, like as in, as for instance, right in front of my house is a huge one, that there's such a big gap, it's almost like hitting a pothole, and when folks drive over it, it actually pops the manhole cover, and so, just looking for some quality assurances there.
Yeah, that's a good point, and part of this improvement, where we do have an adjust manhole and adjust gate valves that are within the roadway, so we adjust those to the proper height and then repave up to them and fix that issue, so, yes, that will be addressed with the project.
Wonderful, thank you, that was it.
Okay, we still have the motion before us, is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution to award a contract for the 2017 Seal Coat Program. Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The 2017 Seal Coat Program, we also, in early May, received three bids on this project, and with Allied Blacktop Company being the low bid of $112,015.3, that was about 16% under our engineer's estimate, so again, another competitive pricing. Allied has done a lot of work in our community and in the region in seal coating, and so that too comes with a recommendation to award.
Okay, council, that is before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Foltz makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Leifeld. That motion is now before the body, is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing in regards to the utility rate study and utility fees. I'm gonna ask the consultants to come up and give the presentation, and Nick, you can start us out with that, and then we'll have the presentation, then we'll take public comment, and then we'll bring it back here to the Diaz, okay? So, Nick, I'll turn it over to you.
I don't have too much to say, Mayor, I think you just covered what I probably would have said, so I'll welcome Stacy from Ellers up here, and she'll run through the slideshow.
Stacy, welcome to the meeting, glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Stacy Quilving with Ellers and Associates, good to see you all. So, you're gonna talk about your utility rates, it's not as exciting as historic preservation or as cute as that little baby that came up there, but it's a very, very necessary part of what you do as a community. I mean, it's the basic services that your residents want, which is making sure that they have adequate drinking water that they can drink, and that they can flush their toilets when they need to. So with that, I'm just gonna give a little bit of background for everyone. So, your utility funds, you have three main, you have your water fund, your sewer fund, and your storm sewer fund, and as such, utility funds are what we call enterprise funds, so they are supposed to be your moneymakers, and what that means is that the revenue that's generated by the end-users of that system, those revenues should be adequate to pay for all costs, so that is your staff cost, your operating costs, your equipment needs, your capital needs as well, and then maintenance on an annual basis that you may need for those utilities. So what you guys did is that probably about 20 years ago is the last time you did a rate study, and at that time, was just inflationary increases that should be happening on an annual basis, and that had been happening up and through 2014. In addition, there weren't significant capital projects that you had, so you're able to, with your rate increases that you're doing, pay for most of those capital projects that you had, up until what we're gonna be looking at for the next 10 years here. So the purpose of the study was really to go and look what's gonna happen from 2017 moving forward, the next 10 years, and so we worked with WSB Engineering to work with city staff to come up with a comprehensive capital improvement plan for all those utilities, to make sure we had everything in there. And what I can say about that capital improvement plan, or that CIP, I would say it's not anything that's like overly aggressive or big plans, it's just your typical maintenance that you have, and you have some system things that need to be replaced over time. So it's not what I would say overly opulent or big or overly cumbersome, even though when we get to the numbers, it may seem like that. We needed to look at a rate structure that could be sustainable, and make sure that those enterprise funds were collecting enough revenue to be able to pay for those capital needs over time, so you wouldn't have to bring in other funds to do that. And then, one of the things that we looked at as well is the city's sewer access charge and the city's water access charge, better known as SAC and WAC fees. I think the council was getting some feedback from the commercial developments within the community, that they wanted to see a decrease or become a little bit more competitive, so we looked at that in the analysis as well. So when we come in to do a rate study, our goal is really to look at, for the water fund, we wanna know who your users are and how much water they're using, so we gotta define that to start looking at different things within that system. We gotta look at your fixed costs versus your variable costs that you have in the system, and when we do this, we try to do it revenue-neutral, and what that means is that we try to do an apples-to-apples comparison. So your rate structure, as it sits currently today, we do it so it's revenue-neutral, so you're generating the same amount of revenue based upon the changes that we have, so again, you can do an apples-to-apples, even though we have changes within there. We looked at conservation rates, which you already had in place, but we're making some recommendations for modifications to that, and then really, it's about ease of administration, and then a system that when someone calls and asks about their utility bill, it can be explained and they can get it and understand it. So, our findings were, is that you have maintained appropriate fund balances in these funds, which is great. The inflationary rate increases have been able to pay for most of your capital that you've had, but you haven't had great needs over the last several years. When we look at the CIP extending out 10 years, we add a 3% inflation to the costs that are on there, it's approximately $33.8 million in projects. I can tell you that's not a lot, extensive, on average around $10 million per utility, but that's within the norm of what you're gonna see for a growing community, but also a community that has to maintain some of your existing assets out there as well. Fixed costs, they're currently not covered with base charges, and those base charges are typically a rate or a meter charge that you have, and so in the water fund, 82% of the fixed charges are paid with user charges, and the sewer fund, 90%. And when we talk about those fixed costs, they're pretty much the same for both the water and the sewer fund, with the exception that the water fund has meters that they sell, but your fixed costs are staff, equipment and vehicles, supplies, and costs to send out the bills. You have those costs regardless, okay, of what happens with your system, so you have capital that's gonna be above and behind that, but you're trying to make sure that you have stability in some sort of fixed revenue that's coming in to cover those costs, because they're always gonna be there. And then when we look at the fixed costs, so again, you have in the water fund, an existing charge of $6 a quarter, it's getting about $188,000 a year. If we look at your actual fixed costs without debt, it's about $681,000, and with your debt in there, it's $1 million. So that's where we're getting that 18% of your current base charges are covering your fixed costs, it's a very, very low percentage. And then likewise, on the sewer fund, it's only about 10%, you're generating about $44,000 a year, and your actual costs are $430,000 a year. So when we looked at all that, and we went into the utility rate study, what I want the folks at home to know and understand, is that this is not something that you're seeing for the first time, we've had a very long process that we've gone through with this, there have been four meetings with the finance committee of the council, we had a work session in late February with the full council, and after that, we followed up with one more with the finance committee based upon the recommendations. We looked at eight options for this, for modeling, to try and get to a place that we thought, or that the council thought, would be working for the residents and the end-users of this, to promote and do what you wanted to do at the end of the day. And what I can tell you is, option eight is what was requested for the final modeling, that's what went back to the finance committee, and that's what is in and included in the rate study for tonight. So, when we go to look and say, who is using water, we're gonna look at the residential summer quarter users, that's highlighted with the red circle. Basically, 50% of your customers in the city are using 15,000 gallons or less. You have 75% of the customers that are using 30,000 gallons or less, which means that's 25% more than the base users, and then you have 90% of the customers are an additional 15% that are using 60,000 gallons, and then above that, we would say is the top tier, 10% folks that are using more than 60,000 gallons of water a year. So again, those are folks that maybe do a lot of irrigation, they may have a swimming pool, they may have a lot of teenagers at home, and maybe things of that nature. What we show in this graph here is the line that is shown is the precipitation over the years from 2006 to 2015 on the far right, and what you can see is historically starting And what you can see is historically starting even from about two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen, the amount of, um, usage has been going down by the average user. Okay? So even though precipitation, yes, is going up, it tells you maybe you have to use less irrigation, but the reality is, is you have the same number of users or maybe a couple more, but their water usage is actually going down. And that's not atypical. Part of that may be when you first implemented your conservation rates, people are becoming a little bit more conscientious of that. But I think it's a lot changing in the, um, building with the efficiencies that you have in our supplies and toilets, water faucets, showerheads, et cetera, that you're starting to see some of that come down. So when we see that, that's why our concern was to make sure that, how do we, um, do your rate structure to make sure that you have enough covering some of your fixed costs? And then as we look at your trends for your users and what they're using, that rates are going to be adequate to cover your needs into the future. Uh, for the SAC and WAC charges, uh, we had a great recession, as you all know, that we're all coming out. So here's what we're hoping is that things move forward greatly. Uh, but what we had to look at is that these, um, are typically charged at the time of building permit or plat. And so what has been estimated over the next ten years is that you'll have about forty units per year that will be coming in those various units. And so that's that SAC and WAC fee we'll talk about a little bit more detail, uh, going forward. So when we look at the water utility first, uh, you have capital projects over the next ten years of about eighteen point four million dollars. Um, highlighted is about eighty-three percent of those projects. The other seventeen percent, I would say, is your just day-to-day things that happen with any utility that you have out there. When we look at that, twenty percent, um, is just your water meter replacement. Again, it's something that you have to do. It's about more efficient, uh, systems and readings that you have out there. Uh, the next big one is your additional treatment plant that's out in two thousand twenty-five, that's seventeen percent. Coming in at number three is just your annual infrastructure, fifteen percent, things you have to do to maintain your, uh, uh, pipes under your roads. Uh, the next one would be the elevated storage tank for the low service area in two thousand twenty-one at fourteen percent. Water tower repainting in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty is about eight percent. Then you have your well and pump house number nine in two thousand twenty-two. And then you have your resident replacements. So again, these are just typical things that any community has that you've got to take care of. And then you've got issues that you've got to address for your growth that you have out there. So annual debt service payments are going to start to go up for that utility because you're not going to have enough cash to just write a check for those. So you're going to have to, uh, issue some debt for those. So if we look at your current, uh, quarterly billing that the city does, uh, there is a six dollar base charge plus right now you charge a dollar eighty-five per thousand gallons used. And then you also charge two thirty-five per ga, thousand gallons for above winter quarter usage that's out there. So what we are recommending is that that base charge or that six dollar meter size charge that you have, that you increase that. And you change that based upon the size of the meter. So it goes from a five-eighth inch meter on the right up to a six inch. And so it would go from six dollars a quarter to fifteen dollars a quarter on a five-eighth inch meter, which is most of the residential homes, up to a six inch meter is going to go from six dollars a quarter up to a thousand dollars. So again, it's really those larger users, um, that are paying more on a fixed basis because of their water usage is going to be much larger than you have out there. For the WAC charges, you wanted to see a twenty-five percent decrease. So the city's current fee is just a little over three thousand dollars a unit. So the rate is being lowered to twenty-three hundred dollars a unit or a seven hundred and seventy dollar decrease. And what's interesting to note is that this new fee is less than the city's fee back in two thousand six, when you're just finishing the boom of your development that you have out there. Uh, due to reducing that, we're going to have a reduce in revenues of about thirty-one thousand dollars a year. So we had to switch that back into the user rates to be able to recapture it. So it's the push and pull of the levers. You reduce somewhere, you've got to increase elsewhere to make sure you're generating the same amount of revenue to take care of that utility fund that you have. So then we look at the rate structures. Uh, you currently have a conservation rate structure in place. We are now recommending a fourth tier and changing those tiers based upon usage. So again, tier one is fifteen thousand gallons or less. That is fifty percent of your customers that are out there. Tier two would be, um, everything from sixteen thousand gallons to thirty thousand gallons, which is another twenty-five percent of your users. Tier three would be thirty-one thousand gallons to sixty thousand gallons or the fifteen percent of your users. And tier four for the sixty thousand plus, um, is, uh, ten percent of your customer base that you have out there. So when we look at these, um, rates, uh, the blue bars on top are residential rates per thousand and the green are other users per thousand gallons. The difference between those two charts on the rates is just the tiering of the use. So in the green below, the ones that are highlighted in green are different segments of how much water usage. So for example, zero to fifteen nine 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 or zero to sixteen thousand is your first, uh, usage that you have. Sixteen now goes up to seventy-five or seventy-six thousand for other residential and accordingly they go up. So what we propose for two thousand seventeen is that the rates, uh, would go to ninety-one cents per thousand gallons of water that is utilized. Two thousand eighteen, you're looking at increasing those just on the lower users to ninety-nine cents, so it's an eight cent difference. So it's just showing from where we want you to go in seventeen and then in eighteen and just that difference as you continue to move those forward. Now, the interesting thing to note about this is that your tier one and two on both of the users, their rates that are proposed are less than the winter quarter rate that you currently charge. Currently charge a buck eighty-five per thousand gallons. And what we did is tier one and two, we reduced that because we wanted to try and give some, uh, lessen the impact to those lower users that they have out there and to offset some of that meter charge increase that they would have as well. And then that's just a bunch of numbers that shows you over the next, uh, ten years, you're just going to need a steady annual increase of about, you know, a buck plus, uh, for each of the utilities, um, users out there to make sure that you can pay for everything. Uh, cash reserves, again, uh, that measures the financial health of your system. You have an existing policy that you want the greater of unrestricted fund balance, less ninety days of operating expenses or three percent of total fixed assets. The way we talk about it in our world, the majority of the time, is that we say that you want six months of operating expenses, less depreciation, plus a hundred percent of any debt service you may have in the following year. So we, we looked at it both ways and they come out to be pretty close, they're pretty the same, uh, that you have. So that's the similar results that we have for those. So what does that mean? So if you look at the red, uh, that's showing up there, the shaded area behind the blue bars, that is your target working capital to have. And so as you can see in two thousand seventeen, you are not there, uh, but by two thousand twenty-five, uh, you're there. You're actually there even sooner by two thousand twenty-one. So you're starting to steadily increase that to make sure you have good working capital and keeping that enterprise fund for the water utility in good shape. Likewise, the sewer utility, uh, nine point four million in ca, major capital projects. Again, we have about eighty-four percent of those projects that are up here. The other sixteen percent would be your annual maintenance. Uh, we have the annual infrastructure projects that you have at sixty-four percent of this. Sanitary sewer lining on an annual basis, eighteen percent. And replace sewer televising van in two thousand twenty-one, one percent. So again, we just highlight the big expenditures that you will have over time. Again, this is a chart that's showing obviously as you have to incur debt for these because you don't have enough cash in there, your debt service will go up. So your current, uh, charges is a base charge is of a dollar fifty a quarter. And that's that forty-four thousand dollars a year that you're making or only ten percent of your fixed costs. And your user charge is three twenty-five per thousand gallons. And that's based upon winter quarter water usage, which is pretty, uh, standard. We're recommending increasing your base charge to fourteen sixty-six a quarter. So this is the big jump because you should be covering more of those fixed costs. And by doing this, you will cover a hundred percent of those in the sewer utility. Likewise, SAC charges like the WAC, you wanted to see a reduction as well by twenty-five percent. Uh, so those are going from nine forty-five to seven hundred and nine per unit. It's a two hundred and thirty-six dollar decrease. Again, it's less than your two thousand five SAC rate that you had before. So again, the revenues are going to be shump, uh, shifted to the consumption rates in those base charges. User charges, um, you don't need conservation rate on this because people just, you have to flush your toilet basically, uh, so it's not like you're, uh, dependent on what happens with the weather and the rain that's out there. We have no changes to the structure of the rates. However, we're recommending that you increase the actual rate per thousand gallons up to three dollars and thirty-two cents. And so what we see is that for the next two years, you're going to have some, uh, pretty large increases. And that's really going from that, uh, six dollar, that base charge up to fourteen dollars. And your consumption charges is a pretty, uh, significant increase over the next two years. Then after that, it will be just inflationary increases over time. Same thing for your long-term analysis, uh, we wanted to, uh, make sure your cash balance was good in there. So it's the dark red or pink in the background with the yellow bars in the front. And this fund has always been, uh, very well maintained with a good cash balance. So that's what we like to see. Stormwater utility, uh, has approximately ten point eight million dollars in major capital projects. It's about seventy-eight percent of the projects that are out there. Uh, annual infrastructure, seventy-four percent, a lot of things that need to be done for this community. Uh, you have the LSWMP and that's the Sewer Water Maintenance Plan to, long-term that we have. Update that's required in two thousand nineteen, that's two percent. And replacement of a street sweeper in two thousand twenty of two percent. Again, just some of the more expensive projects within that. Again, not enough funds in the stormwater fund, so you will see some debt come on and, uh, new debt that will have to be taken on. So you recently reviewed this rate structure. So there's no changes to the structure, okay? But what we are going to have you do is before you were paying for stormwater utility improvements with other city funds. So we're recommending, don't do that. Put it into the, uh, enterprise fund that's most appropriate. So move those capital expenditures into that fund. And then we're going to have you increase your rates, um, for that fund to pay for those in the future as they come forward. And those critical projects that are in there is some pond dredging, drainage conveyance improvement and replacement of stormwater infrastructure within the city. So again, the stormwater utility, the property types were the categories that you had, the structure that was not changed. Your existing two thousand seventeen rates are on the left and we're saying, let's already increase them in seventeen, um, on the right. So on a low-density residential from eleven fifty-five per lot up to fourteen forty-four per lot and accordingly changing throughout. So city will need significant increases through two thousand twenty on those rates to pay for those stormwater utilities. Again, that's a pretty big ticket, um, that you have within there. And then after that, it would be inflationary increases after that. And again, as we look at your, uh, capital reserves for that fund, uh, it's a fund that's always maintaining well within the norm of what it should. So what does this all mean? Um, like I said, uh, the council and the finance committees had several opportunities to look at this. But when we put it all together, what we did is, uh, we reduced the SAC and WAC charge by twenty-five percent. We increased base charges to cover thirty-five percent of the fixed costs for the water fund and a hundred percent of the sewer fund. Again, that's to give more stability to those two funds based upon what you know you're going to have to pay every year. Uh, we've provided a four-tier structure for the water fund, so users can pay based upon consumption and to try and promote a little bit more cons, conservation. The target reserves, we're meeting that for every fund that you have. And then when we look at debt that you're going to have to undertake to do all your capital projects, it's about three point eight million a year. Now, the thing about, um, debt, you know, as folks worry about taking that on, what have you, the rate structure does accommodate for all that. But really, when you undertake debt is that you have both current and future users that are paying for that improvement. So as you know, if you try to save up, if we all try to save up money to buy our house with cash, you would be saving for a long time and probably never buy a house. It's the same thing with these major infrastructure improvements that you have as well. It would take you so long or you would have to increase so much in order to get there on a quicker basis. But what you're losing is that you have increased costs of that over time and more deterioration of that system. So you may not be replacing it when you need. So again, you use debt, um, as a tool when it's appropriate for each of the funds. So when we look at the debt, again, that thirty-three point eight million on the far right is each of your funds that you have. The water fund at seventeen point three million is fifty-one percent of that cost. The sewer fund at six point nine million is about twenty, uh, percent of the costs. And the stormwater fund at nine point seven is about twenty-nine percent of the overall debt that you'd have to issue. So the annual debt service, currently you're at about four hundred and ninety-three thousand a year if you look at the lines two thousand thirteen through seventeen. Seventeen's a misnomer because you have a refunding in there, so that's why that number looks a little bit larger. But if you look, it's been under five hundred thousand that your debt service has been. Going forward in the future from eighteen, your debt service is looking to increase to about six hundred thousand, all the way up to about three million dollars on an annual basis. So I know that looks like a mu, lot, I know it looks scary, but again, the rates, um, and everything that we're doing within the utility rate study will pay for that if you so choose to do those projects in the timeframe in which you have. So as we look at the, uh, uh, median user of a household, what does that mean for them? If you look at the existing rate structure of two thousand seventeen, they're paying about a hundred bucks a quarter for all their utilities. Okay? With the rate increases that we have in there, so that's decreasing your SAC and WAC by twenty-five percent, it's, um, increasing, uh, your tiers to thirty percent, um, sixty percent, ninety percent for that conservation that you have in there as well, it's going to go up to a hundred and ten bucks a quarter. Okay? So when we look at that overall, for the average median user in the community, your total is going to be about forty bucks a year increase to them. Three bucks a month, eleven cents a day. Now, if we look to the low user on the left side, what we always see in these is that they typically get more of an impact because what you find is that they maybe weren't paying the fair share of their, uh, expenses with regards to that system. So if we translate that, they're going from forty-one bucks to sixty-two bucks, uh, quarter. So that's going to be an increase, uh, overall of eighty-four dollars on an annual basis. That's seven dollars a month or else, um, twenty-four cents a day that you have. Uh, the high users are about the same and then the very high users are going to have an even more larger impact on their bill. So with that, um, one, I would like to thank your staff. So Melanie, Julie, Nick, Ryan, Kim, who's not here, our finance person, Renee, others, there's been a lot of folks involved. Uh, it's been a lot of work, um, and time and information that we have to go through and get spreadsheets together to make sure that this all works. The other thing I want to remind everybody of is that this is a fluid document. Okay? So we're setting this up that every year at budget time, you should be looking at your CIP as that's coming forward as your budgets. You should be looking at your rate structure and making sure you're making increases as appropriate for those utilities to make sure that you can pay for the infrastructure needs that you have and service any debt that you have to take on. So with that, I'll be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, before we do that, we're going to open up for the public hearing, okay? So, uh, at this time, I open up to public hearing. Is there anyone who wished to speak to the council in regard to the presentation we were just given? Anyone here like to speak to that issue? Anyone here? Okay? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council will bring the decision here and, uh, we'll open up for discussion. Counsel? Councilmember Vaughn. Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, your honor. I guess one question I have for, um, Ellers is, as, as we commit to looking at this annually and we got some rate structures that are going to be more sustainable, you used good words here, but what's that one thing that we should be looking for that's going to throw these numbers off? Is it going to be a development, just doesn't happen? I know you're using three percent as some increases, but I just want to keep a radar on the one thing that says, oh, oh, be careful of that.
Mayor, councilmember, I wish it was just one thing, but you listed probably a multitude of things that usually come up. Um, it may be that something happens within the utilities, that pipes burst or other things happen, that you all of a sudden have an emergency that's going to change your CIP around. around. It may be that, you know, right now, I think as Ryan had stated with your bids, right now we're seeing competitive bids in street projects. But a year ago, in all these projects, we were seeing, you know, 20 to 40% increases in bids, so it's a matter of supply and demand that may happen at the timing of your infrastructure improvement that you have to do.
Your Honor, I think that's our key, though. I think that we're going to keep an eye on this. I think we need to get started on this. I've got to give some recognition to the former finance committee, because they did a lot of this work getting you up to number eight by the time we got to it. So I think it's recognition of them, they're very cautious about how it's implemented, and I think that's how we got to eight, which is, I'm okay with that, because I think we got to worry about the residents. It's going to be an impact, but I think we break it down. It is an impact, but it's also, we've got to pay for our services. This is an enterprise fund, because Stacy used a good word, we're displacing funding. I mean, we're, the funding is supposed to go where it's supposed to go in this enterprise fund. So with that, I'm making a motion to approve the amended City Code, Chapter 34.
Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve the Chapter 34 change in utility fees. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilmember Lund, and Councilmember Lund.
I'd like to make a motion to also ensure that we do look at...
Just before we move on, you did second.
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, you did second that, so the motion is now before the body. Councilmember Lund.
And I would like to make a motion to ensure that we do look at this annually in some facet. I think, you know, when we were sitting around here and chewing over the numbers, and thank you for dedicating even more time to that, you know, it was apparent that we need to find something that's reliable, that we can really budget for. I agree with Joe, he said that this is a good start, you know, but I do think that we need to continually look at this and find ways to make it more reliable, specifically looking at the WAC and SAC. So because of that, I would like to make that motion that we do indeed review this annually to ensure that we're still on par with where we want to be.
So the Lund amendment is to, along with the approval, is that the finance committee look at this on an annual basis as part of their budget discussions? Okay, is there a second to that amendment? Seconded by Councilmember Leifeld. Okay, that motion's been moved and seconded to the amendment. There's any further discussion, to the amendment. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The amendment prevails. So we have the motion before us to approve the utility fees with that amendment. Finance committee look at that annually as part of the budgetary process. Okay? Stacy, I have one question, if you may. One of the things I noticed that you looked at the formula and suggested that we have the 100% of the debt service for the next year be covered. In your experience, how does the bond houses look at that? You know, we're trying to, we have an excellent bond rating right now, and I see a lot of debt coming up before the city in these next few years as we meet our obligations to provide clean water. And I'm just interested in how the bond houses would reflect on that formula and policy.
Mayor, councilmembers, two things. One, when you issue this debt, it is general obligation debt, even though it's for the utility funds and you have statutory authority to do that. The reason why you do it is general obligation, which means that you are willing to raise taxes if the utility rates aren't there, but you will eventually increase those rates to be there, is because you're going to get lower rates that you have out there. So that being said, even though it is typically general obligation, that makes it better, and that's what the rating agencies are looking at, they are also looking at your utility funds as we are going through the rating report, because they want to make sure that you have healthy balances within there and that you're not having operating losses within those funds as well.
Okay. I could see that, counsel, as being a little bit of prodding and pressure for us to maintain those healthy balances, because we certainly want to put our bond assessment at risk, our bond rating at risk. Is there further discussion? We do have a motion before us as amended. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, looking, being new to the council, elders and city staff has given us a very comprehensive, well-thought-out proposal. I do feel that of the eight options that we had brought before us, this is clearly the best, in my opinion, the best option that we were presented with. That being said, we do, as Joy had mentioned before, Trevor mentioned just now, we need to consider this our first step. We need to continue to monitor this, talking to residents, talking to business owners, prospective business owners. We need to be sure that we keep this highlighted and in front of us. You know, Stacy, when you said that this is, this document is fluid, so we have to really stay diligent, and I just want to explain that, why I will be voting in favor of this, and want to continue to work diligently at building something that works for not just the residents, but also the businesses as well. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll just chime in and say that this has been a hard road to get here. This is not an easy vote to take, because, you know, there are some financial impacts, but I appreciate some of the things that were recognized, for example, lowering the rate, even though the base rate's going up, but we all understand the reason why. We need to make sure that that fund is at a stable fund and stable revenue. And so, and bringing the water rate to users at 91 cents a thousand gallons, you know, helps offset that, even though if we're the lower users, we'll be paying a little bit more with that base charge. Having said that, you know, I could probably buy about, what, 50 bottles of water at Walmart or something with that, with some of these charges, and certainly not 1,000 gallons. So I think we have to remember the value of water. One of the things I think is important, we see it at the legislature, and we're seeing it around all our communities, in particular in Dakota County, the importance of water and clean water. It's a resource in our state and in the national level that's getting a lot more attention lately. We can't take clean water for granted. And if we want to continue to provide our residents with the services they expect, you know, with treatment plants and the water infrastructure that's required to provide clean, safe water, we have to step up to the plate and make sure it's done. And I think, as I look at this and the regulations that are coming from the state and federal level to meet toughing, you know, the tougher regulations that are coming down, you know, we need to meet that obligation. Nitrate, as people know, in the city of Hastings is something that we have to deal with. That's our reality here in Dakota County. A lot of it's geological, a lot of it's because of the activity of the townships around us. And there's a certain realities that we have to face in that. So it is an investment, but it's an investment, it's a good investment, because it's infrastructure concerning our drinking water, and I know all of us take that seriously. So if there's no further discussion, we do have a motion as amended before us. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. Thank you. Next, there's comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience this evening? Any comments from the audience? Okay? Seeing none, council announcements. We have announcements. Councilmember Vaughn.
Just said I'll be, attend to the next Red Rock meeting is on May 25th, up at Newport City Hall at 4:30.
Okay, thank you. Any further announcements? Councilmember Leifeld.
I, once again, thank you, Your Honor. Would like to invite community members to a dialogue about diversity and inclusion and equity. We'll be meeting on Wednesday, May 24th at 7:00 PM, once again, at the Tilden Community Education Center on Fourth and River Street. We hope to see you there, and if you're coming along, I encourage you to bring a friend. And as always, all are welcome. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any further announcements? Councilmember Volch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I attended the last Downtown Business Association meeting, and that was a wonderful opportunity to hear what is important to our downtown business owners. And there were three issues of concern that the group brought up, and so, real quickly, I'm going to mention them. The first being the planters that the city had purchased for the River Renaissance project. They, a part of that purchase was 64 planters that are now the obligation of the Downtown Business Association. And the group would like to discuss negotiating into the future about how it is to pay for the plantings in those planters. They, prior to the project, only had 15 planters, and it was over $100 a planter, and now they have 64. So they are in a little bit of duress about the financial impact of maintaining all of those planters that were purchased by the city on their own. The second issue was in regards to shoplifting, and so, in the end, the chief and Melanie have agreed, they would be happy to have some from the police department provide some education to the Downtown Business Association owners into the future and attend one of their meetings, and so that will be arranged. And then lastly, the group had concerns about parking downtown in respect to the length of time that customers were to be able to park. They were asking for the time limit to be increased from two to three hours. And so I will be bringing that up again into the future, and so that's the end of my little report. Let me know if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Volch. The one thing I will say about the parking, you know, we just talked to businesses down there, what was it, 24 months ago, 18 months ago? We all met at the depot, and, but they're not all members of the Downtown Business Association. All the businesses were there, and they were talking about the length of parking. A lot of them want to keep it two hours, because they want to be able to turn it over. They want people to park there for three, or four, or five, or six hours, and they want to keep it moving. And there were the others that said, no, we want to keep it at three hours, so take a vote. And they voted to keep it at two hours. So I'm just saying, you know, we can continue that discussion, but I know there's been a lot of discussion about parking down there that's not that old, and I'm sure some members of the Hastings Downtown, or the Downtown Association probably lost on that, because there's other interest building owners and stuff like that, that want to keep that discussion going. But we could have that discussion amongst ourselves and more with the Downtown Business Association, but we, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we just discussed this issue.
Okay.
So just to give you some background on that. I don't know, maybe they mentioned that to you, I'm not sure.
No, actually, they kind of said to the contrary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at our minutes.
And I asked the whole group, like, there was, I'm guessing, somewhere, I don't know, 15 to 20 owners that were there, and I like paused with the group, and I asked them specifically, so is this unanimous? Y'all want to see this increase? And I got a yes, I didn't get a one no. So although I do know that there are some business owners that would like to see it maintained, but that was not the feedback I was giving.
And there's business owners, and there's also building owners, and they're, sometimes they don't agree on the, on some things. So, but, well, you know, maybe you and I can talk about that some other time.
Sure, yep.
Okay. Thank you for that announcement. Is there any other announcements, counsel? Okay, seeing none, I have a few announcements. Tuesday, tomorrow, now, we're going to play this by ear, because we all know, seen the forecast, and it looks like it might rain tomorrow between 4:30 and, 4:30 and to 7:00 o'clock. But tomorrow's the Police Week Open House at the corner here at Sibley Street, adjacent to City Hall right over here. We had applied for a permit and closed the street, and we're approved. So we're going to have the Police Week Open House, that is tomorrow, begins at 4:30, I think it goes to about 6:30 or 7:00. So, but please, everyone, take a look at your Facebook page and social media with the city. That may change. If it looks like it's going to rain, and we have a lot, we do have a date ahead of us here, Wednesday, June 7th would be the rescheduled date. Wednesday, June 7th, if it gets rained out tomorrow. So keep an eye on the weather and on our social media for the latest update. The HPC will be meeting at 7:00 PM at City Hall tomorrow. The DCC Board of Directors, Councilmember Bolsonak is our representative on the DCC, they'll be meeting on Thursday, May 8th. Friday, May 19th, the city will host its annual Arbor Day celebration. Councilmember Brock was kind enough there to be there and read a proclamation on behalf of the city council, so she'll be representing us. That's at 1:00 PM at JC Park. So any member of the public who would like to join in Arbor Day celebration, 1:00 PM at JC Park, and volunteers are welcome to assist in planting. On Monday, May 22nd, a week from tonight, the Planning Commission will meet at City Hall at 7:00 PM. The city council will also be taking a tour of the water treatment plant. We could take a look at that investment, as we're talking about those dollars tonight. That will begin at 5:30 at the water treatment plant. That looks good, okay? On Wednesday, May 24th, the city council will be meeting on a budget workshop for the 2018 budget. That begins at 6:00 o'clock, and will go until approximately 7:30. So council budget workshop on May 24th, Wednesday, May 24th. Monday, May 29th, all city offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. Everyone have a safe Memorial Day as we begin the start of summer. And then Monday, June 5th, will be our next city council meeting at 7:00 PM. Prior to that, at 6:00 PM, the Planning Committee of the city council will be meeting to discuss monument signage and zoning parking regulations. Counsel, we have no other business before us, a motion to adjourn is in order.